Good evening, everyone. And welcome back to the second evening of our 2017 Annual Town Meeting. I hope that you are all happy to be here and happy to engage in the town's business. We had a very successful evening last night, and I expect that we will have an equally successful evening tonight, and that we will complete the business of town meetings. As you know, for those of you who are returning from last night, our story ended at Article 23. So tonight, we take up Article 24 through Article 39. But we will start, if everybody would please be seated. We do have a quorum. The clerk has informed me that we do have a quorum, and therefore, this evening is open for business. And we are going to have the Boy Scouts from Troop 1 and 3. We have Nick Fusco from Troop 1, Mark D'Angelo, and John Duran from Troop 3 to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Our Boy Scouts are not just here to say the pledge of allegiance. They are also runners with the microphones this evening, and they had a nice pre-meeting. So they are ready to run when you are ready to speak. Starting, I'm not going to go through all of the rules of town meeting again this evening, but if people do have questions, please do make a point of order, and I will be happy to answer your questions. We are going to start with Article 24, and we'll start with the Planning Board Report. The Planning Board Report, as I understand it, will be on Articles 24 through 32. And would Chris Pfaff, the Chairman of the Board of the Planning Board, please give that report? Thank you.
On April 11th, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend that town meeting vote to approve Articles 24 through 32 as presented in the warrant.
Thank you. As a reminder, Article 24 is to see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 8.5, accessory apartments, to amend the limited number of special permits to be issued, and in effect, in Section 8.54, for a limited number of special permits. This vote does require a two-thirds vote, as it is a zoning bylaw change, that comes before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 24? Yes, sir. You can just use the microphones live.
Hi. Oh, my goodness. Rich Borogard, 61 Lull Street. Actually, I'm glad you actually have that example up. That's actually my neighbor's home right there. So I want to tell a little story about accessory apartments. So back in about 2008, my neighbors, the Newmies, they're one of the core families in the neighborhood, had been in the neighborhood about 30 years, and their daughter moved back in, and they wanted to put on an addition and make a separate apartment for the mother. I thought, you know, that's fine, you know, I'm not against that. They told me that the zoning board had told them this could only be used for a relative, this cannot be rented. I'm like, that's fine, you know, I don't want to be that neighbor that says, no, you can't do that, you can't put an apartment on for your mother. So low and behold, they put the addition on, and two years later, they decide, we don't want to live in the neighborhood anymore, we're going to move. So what ends up happening is that the new neighbors decide, oh, we'd like to rent this out. And they go before the zoning board, and the first time, it was rejected. And it was news to me that this could even be up for rent, because I had been told explicitly by my neighbor, who had been explicitly told by the zoning board at the time, that it could not be used for a rental. So low and behold, through attending town meetings, I discovered that the zoning board has been mercurial and inconsistent in their enforcement of this over the years, and that, you know, now that they've opened it up for rentals across the board. So one of the things I want to point out that is really kind of problematic, especially in small neighborhoods in Islington with these accessory apartments, is one of the things that has to be done, is a second driveway has to be added. And when you're looking at, and you can't see, there's a second driveway, and there's also a fifth parking spot in the front of the house. You have a plot of land that is less than a quarter acre in size, and is now has two parking lots parked for four cars, plus a fifth car in the front. It looks like Ernie Box's lot with a small patch of grass in the front of it. And that's really started to really degrade the neighborhood feel, and, excuse me?
You have the microphone.
Okay. And that, I think it's really degraded the neighborhood feel. I know in the zoning laws, it has to keep a single-family look and feel, and, you know, the house does keep a single-family look and feel, but the kind of damage is done when you drop two driveways in a, you know, quarter acre lot. It just looks terrible, and it actually has encouraged another neighbor of mine to drop a second driveway in their front yard. So, you know, it's kind of propagating, you know, what I would call, you know, a level of ugliness in what was a really nice, you know, single-family neighborhood. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
Actually, one last point in closing. You know, the kind of the moral of my story is that this accessory apartment was put in for what ended up being a very short-term solution to a problem that has now become a long-term issue for the surrounding residents. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Amanda Fairbanks, 46 Phillips Brooks. Last night, there was some very spirited discussion in the character of the town. I know, because I was present and I was waiting in Article 24.
I think you need to speak right into the microphone.
Several of the warned articles presented last night and this evening are very important to me. Article 24 is also personal. My widowed mother is in good health, an excellent caregiver, and eager to embark on the next chapter of her life with her family in Westwood, which both includes myself and my brother's family on Westwood's Ave. I understand that independent cohabitation improves quality of life. It's safer, it's less expensive. It is what I find to be a more holistic approach to family care and parenting. Whereas I appreciate the concerns in regards to density, impact on neighbors, and leniency in regards to non-familial tenants, I assure you that is not my situation. I have the means and the desire to augment my home with an accessory apartment to have my mother cohabitate with some independence. What I don't have currently is the option. I view this as a personal choice, as our choice, and how we, you know, use this property if we to be aligned with the character of this town. And what I'd like to see is this Article 24 pass this evening, so residents like myself on the permit waitlist can proceed and bring my family closer together.
Thank you. Other discussion about Article 24? Yes?
My name is Marshall Parker. I live at 124 Mill Street, and I find myself in the same situation as the woman who spoke before. My mother-in-law is sick, and we would like to bring her to Westwood to help her receive care. It's my understanding that if this amendment does pass, it still has to go in front of the zoning board for a special permit, which has to go through all of the loops that you would have to go through with your neighbors and get their approval and things like that. And so, like the lady who spoke before, all we're really asking for is the option to be able to do that for our mother-in-law. Thank you.
Other discussion on Article 24? Yes, sir. And then there was someone behind you.
John Lucas C. Lane, and I have a question on this because I don't understand. Is this an amendment, not amendment, excuse me, an adjustment to the house permit that goes with the next buyer, or is it an authorization for use by the person who asks for it, for an in-law?
I'm going to turn to the Planning Board for the answer to that question.
Thank you. I'm Abby McCabe. I'm the town planner. Right now, this zoning amendment, Article 24, the only proposed zoning amendment is to increase the current limitation of the maximum 1% special permit up to 2%. This 1% limitation was put in place in 1992. And last year, in September, we reached that 1% limit. That's 1% of the total housing stock in town. Last September, the 45th special permit was issued. Since September, no special permits can be applied for because we've reached this limitation. Since September, we've had many inquiries at the building department, planning department, zoning and housing staff, from people looking to apply for an accessory apartment. The most common reason we've received these inquiries are people who are looking to improve their homes for a family member. And many of these people have had to be turned away. They've encouraged us to submit the zoning amendment. The Planning Board sponsored this article based on the need that we've heard from residents in town. As of today, we have a waitlist of residents who are looking to apply for the special permit. We currently have 17 people who have specifically asked to be notified when an opportunity becomes available. If you approve this zoning amendment, this only allows people the opportunity to apply for a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals will then go on for the public hearing permit.
Thank you.
And just want to add to that, there's also, there's many requirements that the zoning board reviews when they review these accessory apartments. There has, the owner has to be, live either in the accessory apartment or in the principal building. There are size limitations. It has to be at least 500 square feet, no more than 900 square feet. And most importantly, the single-family house has to maintain that single-family look. And then, if I could just show you a few slides, what you have up on the screen are some of the existing accessory apartments that we have in town. Many of them, you really can't tell. And also to respond to an earlier comment, there is no requirement for two driveways. Each occupant in the accessory apartment does have to have a parking space available to them. If there's more than four total on a property, there are screening requirements or landscaping These are a few of the accessory apartments. There's 45 in town, many structures, some are located within buildings and some are in some of the outbuildings. Accessory apartments are also allowed in all residential districts, so you'll find
Thank you. Any further discussion? I do have people behind you who do want to speak, so let's... Okay. So we're going to have to have a... Can you repeat the question?
Thank you for the explanation, but the question I was asking is, after, should the permit be granted? Should the Planning Board go along with that? Person sells the home, does that permit stay with the home for the new buyers?
Yes, the permit stays, the special permit stays with the house, but it has to be recertified every four years by the property owner. They have to submit an affidavit certifying that they live on the property.
Thank you. There was someone in the middle over here?
Brian Hawke, Sexton Ave. Are there any provisions to keep an accessory apartment from becoming a rental apartment? And if it becomes a rental apartment, doesn't that change the designation of a single-family to a two-family? And if so, what are the changes in assessed values and taxation?
Again, the town planner.
These apartments can be rented. It's not, you're not required to have a family member live there. They can be rented. We still consider them single-family, the properties are single-family. The definition of a single-family home is a property that's designed for, well, the building itself is designed for one family, but these accessory apartments, we still consider one family because they have very strict requirements on the size and what they look like, and they're considered by the town for assessing purposes as single-family properties.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on Article 24? Yes, in the back, Mrs. Schwartz. I've recognized someone else.
Marla Schwartz, 32 Westwood Glen Road. I hear people, would it be more acceptable to people here if this were limited to people over 55? And if so, could I make an amendment to that effect? That the accessory apartment be limited?
So that, so you're not making an amendment, you're asking a question?
I'm asking...
I don't know whether the...
I'm asking, could I make an amendment to that?
Town Council might have an opinion about that.
Because I get the sense of the meeting that that might be more acceptable.
Mrs. Schwartz, please. Okay, that would not be in order at this time. Is there any further discussion about Article 24? Yes, sir. You need the microphone?
I'd like to propose an amendment, Dar...
And you do need to state your name and address.
Richard Borogard, 61 Lull Street. I'd like to propose an amendment to Article 24 in writing.
Okay. Did you bring multiple copies?
No, I just have... I'd like to propose limiting any new accessory apartments to...
Sir, sir, you need to wait and be recognized. We need to review the amendment. So an amendment has been offered to Article 24. Do you know where you are putting that language?
We are in the article.
Yep.
I would have to look at it.
Why don't you come on up here without the microphone? And we can try to figure this out.
All right. Well, once he has the language, I mean, right? But once he starts with the language is...
I'm going to have you explain that. Okay, at this time, there is an amendment proposed. I will have the person proposing the amendment read the amendment. So you'll need to state your name and address, and you'll need a microphone. Or the podium is right behind you.
I don't think it's on. Richard Borogard, 61 Lull Street. I move that amending Section 2O of Article 24 to add, after the word thereto, insert the following: Only lots over 10,000 square feet.
The ruling of the moderator, which will be explained by town council, is that your amendment is not within scope, but town council will speak to it.
Maybe it's his amendment, the one that he removed.
He took it back. Did you keep the form?
Yes.
The sanction that the amendment seeks to address is simply a housekeeping section inserted by the Planning Board. The original article by era had 8.3. All this does is make it 8.5 to bring it back to where it should have been. It would be my opinion that your amendment would be beyond the scope of the article and cannot be considered.
So having made that ruling, the amendment is not in scope. Any further discussion on Article 24? Not seeing any further discussion. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote in favor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
It will be a standing vote. Only registered voters can vote. All visitors should be towards the back left, my left, so that the counters can count you. So if you are a registered voter seated in the back section, I would suggest you move forward. I'm waiting for the high sign. Okay, everyone can be seated. We ready for nos? So all of those opposed to Article 24, please stand. Again, if you're standing to be counted, you are opposed and voting no on Article 24. Again, if you're standing to be counted, you are opposed and voting no on Article 24. We do need to do a recount. So those who are not currently standing voting no, please sit. You will get your exercise tonight. All those who vote yes on Article 24, please stand. Again, if you are standing, you are voting yes on Article 24. Okay, those folks who are standing can sit. And now we will ask those who are voting no to please stand. Again, if you are standing, you are voting no. You all can sit, thank you. With 195 people voting, 148 people voted yes, 47 voted no. The two-thirds quantum of vote is met, and Article 24 passes, is approved. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 4.1.6.8, self-storage or mini-storage facility in the table of uses, add a new Section 7.6 Storage Facilities Regulations, and amend the parking requirements for storage facilities in Section 6.1.6.6. Coming before this town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion to so vote, requiring a quantum of vote of two-thirds. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 25? Seeing no discussion about Article 25, I'm calling the vote. All of those, again, this is a two-thirds vote required, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It appears to be, it is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 25. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 2.0 definitions, Section 4.1 Table of Principal Uses, Section 4.3 Table of Accessory Uses, for amendments related to solar energy facilities, large-scale solar and small-scale solar. Coming before the town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 26? Again, Article 26 requires a two-thirds vote. Any discussion about Article 26? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 26. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 7.1 Earth Material Movement, to change the type of permit from a special permit to an environmental impact and design review in Section 7.3. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, is there a second? Article 27 does require a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion about Article 27? There is a question for the runners in the middle of the, my back left.
Brian Hawk, Sexton Ave. I'm wondering as a resident, if I want to bring on, say, three, five, or whatever yardage of loam to my property for spreading and seating purposes, do I have to go through any of this review? Thank you.
Recognizing the town planner.
No, you would not. The trigger for applying for this earth materials movement special permit is for importing, exporting, or recreating of more than 200 cubic yards, which is about 10 to 25 truckloads. So it's a significant amount of fill that's being brought to or from the site that requires the planning board's review.
Any further discussion about Article 27? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 27. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 6.4 Exterior Lighting, to clarify the height limit for wall-mounted fixtures for non-residential properties, limit the hours for exterior lighting at non-residential properties, and identify security and non-security lighting on the exterior lighting plan. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, is there a second? This does require a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion about Article 28? In the back.
Paul Kelly, 107 Willard Circle. I have a question on Section 6.4.12, hours. One hour after closing, the lights to be off. Who enforces that? Thank you.
Is there an answer to that question? Town planner.
The planning board will review the hours that the light should be turned off during their review process when they're reviewing the lighting plans. It may set specific conditions. And then going forward, the zoning enforcement officer works closely for enforcement of the planning board's special conditions and is the enforcement officer for the zoning bylaw.
Any other discussion about Article 28? Yes, Ms. Prebatera. We need a microphone. And please do state your name and address.
Chris Prebatera, 16 Dean Street. I have a further question about the person who would be enforcing this article, or whatever the bylaw. What hours does that person work? And would that person even be working when one would have to see if the light was on longer than needed?
Recognizing the town planner.
During off-hours, the police department can also enforce the lighting requirements.
Thank you. Other discussion about Article 28? Seeing no discussion, again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. There is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 28. Article 29. To see if the town will vote to approve certain zoning amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 2.0 definitions, Section 4.5 Non-Conforming Uses and Structures. This comes before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, is there a second? There is a two-thirds vote required on Article 29. Are there any, is there any discussion about Article 29? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 29. Article 30. To see if the town will vote to approve certain zoning amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 5.5.5 Corner Clearance, to prohibit fences from being located within a certain distance from intersections, requiring a two-thirds vote, and coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? All those, is there discussion? Yes, over here.
Mike, I just have a question. I'm curious if someone.
You need to state your name and address.
Thomas Bachhorst, 154 Church Street. I'm just wondering if someone could explain the formula in this thing, because I can't figure out like how far, I guess it's up here, but, so it's 25 feet in each, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Other discussion? Again, this does require a two-thirds vote. Yes.
Mary Beth Person, 7 Bartle Path. If you currently have a fence or a structure that is with, I guess, non-conforming within that triangle, are you grandfathered?
Town planner is shaking her head, but does need to answer the question.
Yes, if you had a fence that doesn't meet the bylaw, you would essentially be grandfathered because it would, it would, in place before the adoption of this zoning amendment if approved. However, if you were to replace that fence, you would need to comply with the new zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Other discussion about Article 30? Yes.
Rich Borogard, 61 Lull. Just a point of clarification, I just wanted, I wanted to just ask the planning board to clarify. I believe it's three feet from the street as well. Because it's not explicitly stated there, but I believe in the article, it's three feet from street level too, just to clarify.
Town planner.
Right, there's 20, the zoning is written so that there can't be any obstructions, 25 feet setback from the intersections of the pavement at the corners, and then above three feet. So below three feet is okay, because it doesn't impact the sightlines, but over three feet is when it would impact the visibility around the corner.
Thank you. Further discussion about Article 30? Okay, seeing none? Again, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote to approve Article 30. Article 31. To see if the town will vote to approve certain zoning amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw related to Section 10.1.6, excuse me, Penalty for Non-Criminal Complaint, to increase the penalty for a violation from 100 to up to 300 for each offense. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, and requiring a two-thirds vote, is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 31? Seeing no discussion. It is, reminder, it is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Article 32. To see if the town will vote to approve certain housekeeping amendments to various sections of the Westwood zoning bylaw and official zoning map, is may be necessary to correct any errors or inconsistencies, including, without limitation, the correction of one or more erroneous section references, updating footnotes in Section 4.1, and updating the official zoning map to remove an area depicted as a road without a zoning designation. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, and requiring a two-thirds vote, is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 32? You need a microphone.
Elizabeth Phillips, Birch Tree Drive. I'm just curious of this picture, what does this actually represent?
You just need to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Can you just explain what this picture represents, the change? The change on this picture on Birch Tree Drive? Is that going to be a road or something else?
Town planner.
There is no road there. The map on the left, the existing map, this is a single. The map on the left, the existing map, this is a single-family residential lot, that's the yellow is the single-family residential zone, but there is an error at some point in time showing the, what appears to be a road over a person's property where there is no road, so that's what that white is. There is no zoning designation, so the proposed map change is to remove that white area that does not have a zoning designation, and you're being asked to approve it to be fully within the single-family residential C zoning district.
Other discussion about Article 32? Seeing no discussion? Again, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to rescind the vote taken at the September 9, 1946 special town meeting, to accept Section 42, 43, and 44 of Chapter 48 of the general laws, or take any other action related thereto. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote, is there a second? This does require a majority vote, and I do recognize Selectman Hickey.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. John Hickey, 117 Sunrise Road. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. As my colleague, Mrs. Hyde, mentioned last evening, in the coming months, our fire chief will be retiring. His retirement is mandated by state law. Because we knew that his retirement was imminent, in January of this year, the Board of Selectmen appointed a task force to review the structure of the fire chief in our current government structure. And what I mean by that, I wanted to get to the list. Okay, so the vote that we're talking about right now and rescinding was established in 1946, and there's been two major changes in the governance of our town and the administration of our town since that time. And the first is that in 2012, our town charter was amended to create a town administrator. Prior to that, and more especially in 1946, the Board of Selectmen really had a lot of responsibility around day-to-day operations, and that was executed through an executive secretary. That's not a model that could work in the modern era where we have 15,000 people with a full-time police department, a full-time fire department, a full-time operation. So it's the town administrator who really executes on the day-to-day, and it's the Board of Selectmen who create policy. Similarly, sorry. Okay. Similarly, this town meeting in 2015 removed our hiring for public safety officials and officers from civil service. So we were left in a situation where the 1946 model didn't work with these two changes, both to our charter. We believe that adopting these articles that I'm going to present tonight will align us with how we've handled the fire chief and how we handle all department heads. Sorry. So there's three articles that come in succession. The first one is to remove, to rescind the vote taken in 1946. I would ask that town meeting vote to remove that 1946 vote so that we can move forward proposing language that would modernize the current system.
Further discussion about Article 33? And I do want to note that, and do check me on this, Selectman Hickey, that 33, 4, and 5 are all related to what you just spoke to. Okay. Yes, that is the case. Further discussion about Article 33? Seeing no discussion? Are you a registered voter?
I am not, I'm registered by my association.
So, registered voters are allowed to speak at town meeting?
Correct.
Why don't you, why don't you come up here? That's, that's something that you should ask for in advance, certainly if you know you are speaking. I will, please do not speak out. I will certainly recognize people who have points of order when it is appropriate to do so. This visitor has been granted permission to speak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you to the body for the privilege of speaking here tonight. My name is Mike Terrell, 486 Washington Street, Walpole, and I'm the Vice President of the Westwood Permanent Firefighters Association, Local 1994. We represent Westwood's firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. We're here tonight in opposition of Article 33, which if passed, would repeal the town meeting vote taken in 1946. This vote accepted the "Strong Chief Law," Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 42. This law is relatively short and does a few common sense things. It establishes a fire department, names the official in charge, the chief, and places him in charge of the fire department. It states that the Board of Selectmen will appoint the fire chief, requires him to report to the selectmen as they see fit. Finally, it states that the chief may, quote, "be removed for cause at any time after a hearing." Seems simple enough, so why does the town want to repeal it? Politics and public safety do not often go hand-in-hand. As it stands now, the law protects the chief from undue political influence. He's able to identify risks here in Westwood, manage the fire department in order to reduce those risks, and advocate for every single one of you to his last breath. Sometimes this may go against political agendas, which is why the state legislator wrote this law and why Westwood's town meeting passed it over 70 years ago. Your fire chief, like your firefighters, needs to be able to act in your best interests without reservation and without hesitation. If this disagrees with political agendas, or it isn't what politicians want to hear, so be it. Your fire chief isn't a political pawn, he's here to do absolutely everything in his power to protect the people of Westwood and all those who work, travel, or visit here. Repealing the Strong Chief Law would allow town administration to threaten the fire chief with termination every three years, without cause and without a hearing, simply by refusing to renew his contract. Essentially, the fire chief becomes subject to political pressure. Agree with us or see yourself out of a job on July 1st. No hearings, no reasons, just gone. The town talks about merit being their argument for repealing this law. They don't want to be stuck with a fire chief who's bad at his job or mismanaging the department. The good news is that the existing law allows them to remove a fire chief who isn't doing his job, and believe me, none of us would want to work for a failing chief any more than you'd want to be stuck with one. That's not what this law is really about. It's about limiting the fire chief and making him a political appointee rather than a public safety official. Politics will affect his decision-making. Fight for what's right and be out of a job, or stay quiet and continue working. This isn't right, and it isn't what public safety is supposed to be about, which is why we're opposing this article today. Public safety isn't about politics, which is why there's no D, R, or I next to our names, and why we don't care what's next to yours. There are a few issues with the literature the town has distributed. First, the town asserts that the current law allows a fire chief to be appointed, quote, "for life." As I stated before, the current law states that the chief, quote, "may be removed for cause at any time." The town can keep a good chief and they can remove a bad chief, whether he's a strong or a weak chief doesn't matter. Second, the assertion that the fire chief works with no oversight from town management is also flatly untrue. If you've read the Strong Chief Law, you may have noted that, among other things, it requires the chief to, quote, "report to the selectmen when they require," and states that the expenditure of money, quote, "shall be subject to such further limitations as the town may from time to, from time to time prescribe." If you've read the proposed replacement language at Article 35, this may sound familiar because it's virtually the same. Clearly, the current law does not create an appointment for life, nor does it allow the fire chief to operate with no oversight from the town. If it did, the proposed replacement wouldn't read virtually the same. This law has served Westwood well since 1946, and it serves Westwood well today. The current fire chief has been in that position for 20 years. There is no problem to be found, and there is no problem with the way the Strong Chief Law serves Westwood today. Strong chiefs have worked in Westwood for three-quarters of a century without issue. There are no fire chiefs running rampant through town, overspending their budgets and mismanaging their departments. Contrary to what some may have you believe, the current law prevents this. It would make sense if it didn't. Tonight, we're here to ask for your help. It has been nearly 10 years since we publicly opposed a warrant article at town meeting, the last time being in 2009. Since we last asked for your help at that meeting, we have responded to 23,681 calls. Tonight, we're in a position we don't find ourselves infrequently, calling Westwood's residents to help us. We ask you to keep politics out of public safety and to allow your firefighters to fight for you as we always have and we always will, without reservation, without question, and without hesitation. We ask for your support in voting no on Article 33. Thank you for your trust, thank you for your support, and thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Ahern.
Pat Ahern, 103 Church Street. How many people were here in 1946 to vote that, that particular thing through? The world has changed significantly since 1946. Westwood has changed significantly since 1946. There are two, there are two statutes that define fire chief in Massachusetts. The one the gentleman just referenced, which is 42, it's called the Strong Chief, and there's 42A, which is called the Weak Chief. The task force that I chaired, we looked at that and we rejected the 42 Weak Chief. We took all the responsibilities of the fire chief, and in the subsequent articles, if you read through them, you'll see, we've, we've now incorporated those in our charter. So we now control what happens in the town of Westwood if you pass those articles. The fire chief position, as we've redefined it, is virtually identical in terms of what it's supposed to do and its responsibilities as the police chief's position that we've been very successful for 25 years. I would encourage you to ask Chief Chase, Chief Haas, and Chief Silva if there's political pressure to do what the selectmen tell them to do every year. That's not how management, modern management works in Westwood. What we're asking for you to do is accept reasonable management changes to our fire chief position so that you can contract them for three to five years. Chief Silva, believe it or not, is already on his second five-year term. Okay? We're asking you to also put in protection for the new fire chief so they can't be removed without cause. The protections we put in for the fire chief are virtually identical to what the police chief has lived with for over 25 years. All we're asking you to do is to bring Westwood Fire Chief Position into the 21st century to let management run it effectively and to operate like every other manager in this town. There's no difference. It does not behoove us to change fire chiefs quickly or rapidly, just like any other department head. Okay? Westwood, if you talk to neighboring selectmen, is the most apolitical town in terms of how we manage our department heads. I know, I served on the board for 18 years. So I would encourage you to rescind the vote at 33 and adopt the other measures so that we can bring our fire department into the 21st century to protect us, and that's what's in the best interest of the town. Thank you.
Further discussion about Article 33? Yes, sir. You need a microphone.
I have a lousy speaking voice.
Name and address, please.
George Young, 157 Manhattan Street. Okay? I've, I'm old, sometimes I'll ramble, and I'm going to apologize in advance. But I read this article, it said repeal something. I said repeal what? Doesn't say what we're repealing. I had to go to the web, find the articles, and read what they said, and they, very interesting. The fire chief under the current article is also an engineer. He can step in and make changes to various things in town. Now I'll give you a story which is true, and I got it from the fire chief, Jay Sheehy. For those of you who remember him, Jay Sheehy. Just if you don't remember him, if you have a fire smoke detector in your home, Jay Sheehy put it there. And I won't go any further on that. Anyhow, to get back to it. There was a building being built in town for residences, it was a bodge system. Jay looked at the plans and said, "There's no sprinkler. I won't sign on it." He had pressure from the political side of the house to do it. He refused to. Okay? Eventually, they did put in the sprinkler system, using the most expensive system they could find, they had a cheaper option. But the building was built to code. It wouldn't take the weight of the less expensive system. Jay did that. The fire chief did it, under the current article. Okay? Another incident I just heard, I've never heard this story before. Some of you may remember it. There was a small chlorine leak at the pool. I forget whether it was 50 or 500 gallons, but it was a lot of chlorine. Okay? They called the fire department, the police department, they rushed up here. Okay? Fire chief walked in, took one look and said, "Everyone out of the building." Okay? There was a basketball tournament. This was back when Westwood-
Sir, I am going to ask you to-
Well, let me finish, please. Let me finish.
I will, I will.
Okay? I told you I rambled, I warned you. Okay? Now let me finish this story because this is more new, because it wasn't Jay that this happened to. There was a chlorine leak, okay? Lot of chlorine down in that thing. It was deadly. When I heard the story about it, I was shocked. Okay? Jay went up and said, "Everybody out of the building," not the fire chief, not Jay, excuse me. "Everybody out of the building." Okay? And the fire, the police chief comes up and says, "Oh, no, we can finish the game." The fire chief said, "No." Okay? Because a police chief can be political. A fire chief, there's only one concern, as Jay told me. "I don't care what happens. You're not going to die other than natural causes on my word." Okay? And this is why I think the Strong Chief is better, because he will not have the political pressure. Whether they say it's going to be there or not, it will be there. Thank you.
Other discussion? An article. Yes, Ms. Schwartz.
Marla Schwartz, 32 Westwood Glen Road, and I'd just like to know, this law has been in effect since 1946, has it worked well? I, I think it has. I haven't read about any major fires or any major problems in Westwood. If this law has, our chief's been here for 20 years. If, obviously, the law's worked well because I guess most people don't complain about him. If the law's worked well, why are we changing it just to join the 21st century? Why don't we let the 21st century join us?
Thank you. Other discussion? Selectman Hickey.
This article is not a question of what has worked well and who has worked well. This is a question about, as we, for the first time in 20 years, go out to the professional fire service and select our next fire chief, what is the model that we want to operate under? We currently operate under an ambiguous model. We've removed the position through town meeting at civil service. We've removed the protections of civil service for the chief. We believe that by inserting, it's contained within Article 35, protections around just cause standards and arbitration rights, that we will attract the best candidate who knows they're coming to a town with security. So what was adopted by town meeting in 1946 did work well. Our town at the time operated under a very different model than it did today, and it's those two major changes. How we operate the town today, daily, day-to-day activities is through a town administrator. And secondly, we've removed the fire service and the police service from civil service. So what has worked well is not going to work well as we now go out into the marketplace, as it were, to retain, to recruit and to retain the best available candidate.
Further discussion about Article 33? Mr. Shapiro. Mr. Shapiro. Let's see if we can get some new batteries in that one. Oh, there's one coming your way.
I want to be close to the board of selectmen again. Wrong. Phil Shapiro, 159 Mill Street, selectman for only six years. So, I was on the task force, and we had several options that are set out in state law for ways that you can configure the relationship between the fire chief and the town. What responsibilities does the fire chief have? What responsibilities do the rest of the town have relative to running the fire department? We didn't think any of those fit this town best. And so, town council and a number of others who were on or responding, working with the committee, sat down and wrote something from scratch. And, the idea that the committee had charged them with was to find a way to give the fire chief the authority, the responsibility, and the accountability to run the department as they see fit as a professional. But, it also to give the town administrator some review and oversight so that there would be some checks and balances, and it would protect us from a situation where one individual had a family or political or other pressure put upon them and had no one to report to. This gives the responsibility to the fire chief and requires them to report to and have some oversight, not micromanaging, but the ability to have some oversight and someone to work with in the town administrator. And that is now consistent with what the town decided to do a number of years ago in changing from an executive secretary to a town administrator. So, for the fire chief and everyone else in town, you have the town administrator who has that responsibility. For the fire chief, it is one person standing alone, and we've been blessed by having great fire chiefs, and I believe, you know, and I'll put myself out of this, but relatively non-political boards of selectmen so that fire chiefs aren't pressured to hire people's relatives or anything like that. It hasn't happened. It's not going to happen under this new statute. But, this gives us a way to actually have the department be run in a professional way by a professional with oversight to bring the concerns and the interests of everybody in this room to bear when need be to the chief, but most of these decisions are still the chief's decisions. So, we spent, I don't know, five or six nights back in whenever it was, January and February, going over this. It was a group that included Chief Scoble. He was very helpful as a sort of a consultant to that group. He didn't necessarily agree with everything, and I don't want to speak for him. But, I think this is a model that has worked in many other towns and can certainly work in Westwood.
Further discussion about Article 33? In the back.
Hello. Patrick O'Connor, 291 Farm Lane. We have a fire department that's in the 21st century. We have one of the most dedicated, professional, and driven fire departments in the area, and I would put us up against anybody in the state. This is a fire department that works. This is a fire department that's staffed by members that know our streets, know our town, know our people, know our kids. What this does is it gives you the power to take it and control it whichever way you want to pull it, for these three-year contracts. If you hired a new fire chief from out of town, he wouldn't be able to get to my house tomorrow. These firefighters, this gives them incentive to test, to educate themselves, to make themselves better so they can be deputy fire chief and fire chief at some point. You incentivize the job. And you give these firefighters that serve us so well the incentive to become chief someday. By taking this and politicalizing it, you pull the rug right out from under their feet. We've had fire, police chief after police chief from out of town. Again, they're wonderful gentlemen, and they do a wonderful job, but these guys serve us every day of the week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and we're very, very fortunate to have them. So, I would strongly suggest a no vote. Thank you very much.
Further discussion about Article 33? Ms. Hirschberg.
Marsha Hirschberg, 40, Penning Drive. I'm very happy that the gentleman down here referenced Jay Sheehy. He would, there was a move afoot back in the day when he had passed all the civil service exams and was a high scorer and was wanted to be fire chief. But, the selectmen at the time wanted to remove that position from civil service and appoint somebody that was very comfortable to them, but perhaps did not pose, I think it was a threat that Jay posed. He was so intelligent, and he had been representing his union in town, and some people were not happy with that. I was on the finance commission of the town. I opposed that measure by the selectmen, and this kind of a proposal was defeated. I would like to echo what this gentleman said about Jay Sheehy. I then became selectman. He was one of the most intelligent administrators anybody could ever hope for, and he came from Westwood and he knew us inside out. So, I think that this measure should be voted down and we should agree with our fire department. And, I also am concerned that this has come up kind of at the last minute. Everybody knows how old Mr. Scoble is, and when the chief was going to turn a certain age. So, I think it's very convenient that we are discussing it right now. If this was a true measure, this work should have been done years ago. I am not happy at all with this, and so, I'm asking you to vote down this article. Thank you.
Further discussion about Article 33? Yes, selectman Hickey.
I'll be brief. I just want to be clear. Today, under the current model, the board of selectmen appoint the fire chief. In a model that the town meeting approves tonight, the board of selectmen would still retain the power of appointment. The power of appointment does not change. The board of selectmen appoint today, they would appoint tomorrow. And when we talk about finding the best, we are in an ambiguous world right now where we've removed this position from civil service. We are trying to clarify the standards and the protections that this person would have, which include just cause, which include the right to a public hearing, which include the right to arbitration. So, we are de-politicizing it by putting in multiple levels of due process. There is no ability for the selectmen to nilly-willy pick fire chiefs.
Further discussion about Article 33? Yes, in the back.
Paul Kelly, 107 Willis Circle. Just have a question about the, you know, match the structure of the police chief. We know the fire chief has been here 20, 21 years. Under this new restructure, how many police chiefs have we had? Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, my understanding is we've had three police chiefs in 27 years.
Further discussion about Article 33? I will be recognizing new folks at this point. Yes, over here to the left, my left.
Michael Craft, 30, Coach Lane. Just a question, please. Is it the belief of the selectmen that we am the task force that failure to enact these changes will adversely impact the town in terms of hiring after the chief retires?
Selectman Hickey.
I believe that if we were not to enact these changes, when we go out to recruit, we will be sending mixed signals to those who want to come to the town. We have removed the position from civil service.
Other discussion about Article 33?
My name is Joan Courtney Murray. I live at 46 West Chester Drive. And full disclosure, I am the relatively new director of human resources for the town. My background is in the private sector, so for just about, just over two years now, I've been doing human resources on the municipal side. One of my jobs to support the task force was to do some research on other towns and what they're do for their fire departments, and so, I reported the data to the task force for their consideration. And I will just share with you that there are some horror stories of towns where, that had a chief that they actually didn't want to keep, that was kind of a rogue chief, and it was very hard, took them years to actually remove that person. In terms of our internal candidates for the job, they're absolutely going to be considered. I mean, no one is being, they would be considered as part of the process for our hiring. And then, finally, I just would like to make the point, for those of you who have businesses, who work in businesses, when is the last time you made a hiring decision and hired someone and said, "We're going to hire you for life. You can do whatever you want. There'll be no oversight. The job is yours for as long as you want it." I just think this makes sense for the town to be able to have some semblance of checking in and have the fire chief report as everyone does to earn their continuing contracts based on the job they do.
Thank you. Further discussion about Article 33? New people, please. New people. Yes, in front.
Elizabeth Phillips.
You may need to just move up to this microphone. That one doesn't seem to be working right. Thank you.
Elizabeth Phillips, 82, Birch Street Drive. I was on the task force, and one of the things that I found important to do to make some of these changes is because of the chief has been removed from civil service, in order to recruit someone strong, we definitely needed to make some adjustments to this amendment so that we put protections in for the chief or the new chief. And, if there is someone who is, you know, a current firefighter, this amendment doesn't preclude them for opposing or applying for this job. So, I really think it's important to vote yes on this change so that we do have the protections for the chief going forward, given the fact that that position's not in civil service anymore. Thank you.
Article 33, further discussion.
Thank you. Joe Privatira, 16, Dean Street. I have to tell you, I hope everyone listened very, very carefully to what Marsha Hirschberg had to say, because I lived through that time period on the fire department, and it was not a pleasant experience with the politics that got involved. If anybody wants to say there wasn't any politics, then shame on you, because it was. I can't tell you how painful it was to work in the department at that time. Jay Sheehy was a top-shelf guy. Paul Scoble, the same. Bill has also epitomized greatness in the department. I'd like to say this. The devil you know is better than the devil you don't know, and Marsha, thank you so much for refreshing our memories during that difficult time.
Further discussion about Article 33?
Does it work? Yes, it does. My name is Jim Connors. I live at 44 Whitney Avenue. I think we moved to Westwood in 1996. I served on this task force. Mr. Shapiro was a past selectman. Mr. Ahern was a past selectman, for only 18 years, I think, Pat. We had other wonderful members, but most importantly, we had Chief Scoble sitting with us. Every single time a question was asked, I turned to the chief, because that's how much respect I have for him, and said, "What do you think of this, chief?" I've heard the word "politics." I actually heard the word "politics" from the politician, the union rep. That's the first time I heard that. That's where politics was injected in this. There's no politics in this. What we're trying to do, and let me clear something up, the position is not in civil service anymore. What that means is when Chief Scoble is mandated by the state, not by us, but by the state, to retire, we have to get a new chief. We don't have a choice. I asked him if we could change the law or if he could stay. He probably wants to relax and enjoy himself. What we're doing is trying to make the fire chief treated the same as the police chief and every other department head in Westwood. When we need to replace the chief, advertisements will go out. I would, from what we talked, they will go out to quite a large amount of people. We will then bring in, hopefully, the best and the brightest. The last two searches, as I recall, the DPW director and a school superintendent, internal candidates were hired for both. What I've heard a couple times, and I want to clear up, is if we keep the statute the same, which is really the biggest reason for me looking to change this, you own that new person forever. It is just about impossible, under the current statute, to get rid of that person if they are not as good as Chief Scoble or what we in Westwood have come to expect. There's something now called an iPhone. I know it wasn't here in 1946. If there are any politics pushed on a fire chief, a police chief, a DPW chief, a school superintendent, our CFO, the word is going to be out. Let's remove the politics and look through the eyes of 15,000 Westwood residents and do the best for all, which is to change this statute so we can attract the best and the brightest, who may be from internal or may not, but so we can do that. Thank you.
Further discussion about Article 33? And at this point, I'm seeing one new person, and then we will call the question.
Brian Hark, 27, Sexton Ave. Would anybody know what the current chief thinks of this proposal?
Further discussion about Article 33? Mr. Cummings. Please get a microphone up there.
John Cummings, 4, Chickadee Lane. I have a question about the civil service, and what does it mean if the chief is now no longer in the civil service? What is he missing as far as protections that this would give him? And, I also want to know, this was all vetted by the FinCom, but in all the Westwood Media Center video that I watched, I didn't see any opposition or any debate from any two different sides. So, if you could answer why the civil service, what does that mean that the chief is now, the next chief does not have any civil service protection? What does that, I don't know what that means.
Does someone want to answer that question?
Civil service was a structure, and it still exists. Many municipalities have exempted themselves from civil service, which the legislature allows you to do. So, it has first to do with the selection process and mandates around who you select and how you select, but it also has mandates around termination processes, and it offers a great deal of due process protection and hearing protections, and it affords the civil service authorities the right of reinstatement and... service authorities the right of reinstatement and all sorts of statutory rights and protections. So when we've removed that position from civil service, we did take away some of the protections of that position. Through these changes that we proposed tonight, we are adding in very clearly how someone gets hired and how someone gets terminated in the event that we have to go down that path. We, just to keep in mind, as a town, offer a great compensation and benefits package to all of our employees. We are sought after when we post jobs, because we are a great town to work for. So, we do believe that we are going to do a great job in hiring the right person, but should we be in the position of finding ourselves needing to end someone's employment, we have put in these articles tonight, how it is that that would happen. If we were not to do anything, I believe that when we go out to recruit someone, they will be very uncertain of what are their protections. When we talk about the fear of politicization, if the town has removed that position from civil service and removed it from some of those protections, and we then try to bring you in to hire you, I think we're going to cause a great deal of confusion. We're trying to clarify and codify the protections that we will afford the next chief, which actually are as good as or better than what I believe civil service offered.
Okay. This does require a majority vote. This will be the last person to speak, Ms. Prevettiera?
Chris Prevettiera, 16, Dean Street. Quick question. Were any current firefighters on the task force?
I'm told no. Okay. On Article 33, requiring a majority vote, and again, Article 33, 34, and 35 are related. On Article 33, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
We will require a standing vote. Will the counters get ready? I need to let the voters get, the counters get in place. I know we're all anxious. Are we ready? All those in favor, please stand. Those who are in favor of Article 33, and vote yes. And now, those who vote no on Article 33, please stand. Everybody can be seated. 131 yes, 61 no. Article 33 is approved. Moving to Article 34, to see if the town will vote to delete Section 8-2-2, Fire Department of Chapter 8 in the Town Charter, and insert in its place, coming before the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? This does require a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion about Article 34? Seeing no discussion on Article 34, and again, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Westwood Charter by inserting a new Chapter 5 Fire Chief as follows. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's unanimous vote to recommend and make a motion that the town so vote. This does require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 35? Seeing no discussion about Article 35, and again, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote in favor of approving Article 35. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to amend the Code of the Town of Westwood, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1 to 6, Non-Criminal Disposition of Bylaw Violations. This does require a two-thirds vote. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Again, requiring a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion about Article 36? Seeing no discussion and requiring a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a two-thirds vote in favor to approve Article 36. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 58, Municipal Charges Lean, Specifically for Building Division Fines and Fees. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? This does require a majority vote. Is there discussion about Article 37? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is a majority vote to approve Article 37, Article 38, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 58, Municipal Charges Lean, Specifically for Board of Health and Health Division Fines and Fees. Requiring a majority vote. Coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 38? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 38 is approved. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 58, Municipal Charges Lean, Specifically for Conservation Commission and Conservation Division Fines and Fees. Requiring a majority vote. And coming before town meeting on the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation and motion that the town so vote. Is there a second? Is there discussion about Article 39? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, it is approved. Article 39 is approved, and I thank you all for attending this town meeting.
[applause]
There is a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. This town meeting stands adjourned.[1794.75][1794.75][applause]